I call to order the March 11, 2019 Business Meeting of the Cincinnati Board of Education. We welcome everyone and request everyone in the audience to please silence your cellphones and electronic devices. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates.
Present.
Ms. Bolton.
Present.
Mr. Davis.
Present.
Mr. Mirofsky.
Present.
President Jones.
Here. Thank you. I need a motion to approve the minutes from the special meeting, March 6, 2019, and the regular board meeting, March 6, 2019.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Mr. Messer, please present the March 5, 2019 Step Committee Meeting Report.
Happy to do so. We convened the Step Committee, and for those members of our audience who don't know that committee, that is our strategic planning and engagement committee. And it was our first opportunity as a board committee to then meet with the new project team led by our superintendent, who will be doing the day-to-day work of the strategic plan, and also the vendor partner engaged to learn, who will be helping us put that report together. It is a really exciting process that we are in the midst of. The Step Committee represents three board members, actually now two, will have to fill that one going forward with our recent resignation. But we've also had participation from an incredibly diverse, wide swath of our community, including neighborhood leaders, parents, former and current CPS folks, and many others who care deeply about public education in Cincinnati. So what we got was kind of the high-level review of the project plan and kind of a deep dive into what would be happening over the coming weeks. These Step Committee meetings will take place monthly, and they are open, as all of our meetings are, for any one in the public to attend and to hear about the progress towards our strategic plan and provide input, et cetera. The strategic plan has a deliverable date of this year, and that strategic plan will be presented at the superintendent's back-to-school address in August. So we look forward to reporting out going forward on the scorecard, which will tell us that we are on track to meet the objective set forth in the strategic plan.
Thank you. Do board members have questions or comments? Okay, I need them, that's the only committee report, I need a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Anyone have any kudos? Mr. Messer?
Yes, you know, there will always be issues with a district as big as our, something will come up. And life is, as they say, 1% what happens and 99% how we respond. And we had a child, who a parent reached out to me via social media and said, I know that you're on the school board, and this was an unfortunate situation that my child and a couple of other children had on one of the school buses. So they gave me the situation, I passed it on the superintendent, who then immediately engaged Lauren Johnson, who is our administration leader, specifically responsible for transportation. And what I loved is a quick follow-up from the parent, who said, I just want to thank you so much for immediately following up on my issue that I talked to you about yesterday. Mr. Johnson personally called me this afternoon and reassured me that they would take swift action and to ensure that that situation would be resolved and would not happen again. I want you to know that I feel that you have a really good man employed at the district in that role, who was very responsive to this issue. So I just want to give a shout-out to Lauren, because this is, you know, how we should approach these issues as they arrive, and they will. And I think he hit this one out of the park and really made a family extremely grateful.
Thank you. Mr. Mirofsky?
Thank you, President Jones. So my kudo goes to a young man named Aiden, who I think I may have given a kudo to before, and those who come to our meetings will recall, we had a young man come and present to our Student Achievement Committee meeting about his club at Walnut Hills, We Dine Together, which essentially, the long story short, is that a bunch of groups of a bunch of different kinds of kids commit to getting together at lunchtime. It's sort of the goal is to reduce bullying in the school. He also founded Walnut Hills' chapter, Be Strong, which is a national network. Well, a local business proprietor, who some of you may have heard of, named Molly Wellman, got ahold of me a while ago, wanted to do something for bullying, and I connected her with Aiden. Aiden sent me a follow-up email to say how thankful he was, again, to me, and board member Dabris, and board member Bolton, and myself, and that he has partnered with a local small business owner to expand his efforts in his school with his assistant principal and his club moderator. So I want to give another kudo to Aiden and the work that he's doing in CPS. He certainly has big dreams, because he ended his email with, hopefully, we can expand this to other schools. So, kudos to Aiden.
Thank you. Any other kudos? Thank you. Ms. Bates, would you please present the retirements?
Yes, we have two retirements from our civil service personnel staff. And the first is Cindy A. Gillespie, and the second is Theodore E. Willgong. We congratulate you on your retirement, and thank you for your years of service to our children. Wish you well.
Thank you. Well, it looks like we did not get any requests for the hearing of the public? Zero. Okay, that's unusual. Okay. Alrighty. So we'll just move forward to our presentations. Superintendent Mitchell, please introduce our first presenter.
Yes, so we have a series of presentations this evening to really just give you an update on some very important work that's taking place within the district. Each presentation is approximately 10 minutes long, and so our first presentation is, we thought it'd be a good idea to give you an update on the progress of the Stargill Stadium. So, Robyn Brandon, our director for facilities, is coming forward to make a presentation and update. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
With me, I have Dave Hester with Elavir, you may have remembered, he's our project architect on the project. And Evan Eagle, back in the back, also is serving as a project architect, and I've got Bill Mooreing with me as well.
Yep, we're having a hard time hearing.
Is that better?
No.
Better? Okay. Can you hear me now? Okay.
It's getting better.
Okay, I'll try to talk really loud. Unusual for me. So just so you recall, where the new Stargill site will be located, on the corner of Ezra Charles and John Street. So the new main entrance, the grand entrance, will be exactly diagonally across the street from Taft High School's front door. So our design team, we have representatives from CPS, Bill Mooreing and myself, and facilities. We've been working closely with the athletics department, Josh Harden, Ricky Miller. Several groups from Taft High School have been involved in the design portion of it. We're also sharing with you the design and construction team, Elavir Design, that I already introduced, and then some of our other designers and the contractors onboard. And I just wanted to point out, just because you'll see the schedule here in a minute, as you know, we've got a really, really tight schedule on this project. So we decided to divide the project up into bid packages, so that we could award contracts on items that had long lead times, get those done early. So that's why you're seeing the playing field pulled out separate, the sports lighting, the grandstands. We bid those all early upfront, because we knew that we needed that time to get the product here. Been working closely with city planning and zoning and building inspections. They have really been helpful in expediting our requests for hearings and approvals. And then we've also been working closely with some representatives from the various neighborhood associations. We meet with them on a regular basis to give them updates on the construction progress. We recently just sent a flyer out to the neighbors to identify key things that were going to happen in the schedule that related to hauling off a lot of dirt. We were doing some compaction on some piles for the retaining wall, so we want them to be aware of things that may impact them day in and day out. So we sent that flyer out this week, just as an FYI. So schedule, as I alluded to. So the schedule, typically, we would do a Gantt schedule in construction. This project is so, has so many moving parts, and with such a short timeframe, we developed a schedule that actually identifies activities by area, so that we can make sure that we're meeting those milestone dates on every part and piece of that site. So you'll see that the field and the track, we've got a completion date of mid to late July, early August. The buildings up on the top each have a separate schedule completion dates. We're looking at doing the restroom building and the grandstands next. So our thinking is, we'll have the field done, we'll have the grandstands done, we'll have the bathrooms done. Those should be complete late July, early August. The ticket booth, which is the building closest to the corner of Ezra Charles and John Street, ticket booth, home locker room, and weight room will be done by the first game, so by the second week in August. And then our final building, which is on the farthest west of the site, has concessions, visitor locker room, a multipurpose room, and bathrooms and showers for the officials. That one's lagging a little bit behind, so we're looking at late August completion for that. So that's one that we're really going to work on trying to accelerate that schedule. But we thought of anything that could sort of fall away and still have the stadium usable, that would be the one. So we're working really hard to get that one completed by the first game as well. So as you can see, lots of moving parts and pieces, but right now, we are on schedule. So the sandy soil at that site has allowed us not to have any weather delays, even with all the rain we've had. So it's been a really blessing. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dave to talk a little bit about some of the design changes that we made in response to comments that the board had last time we presented.
Thank you, Robyn, and good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Appreciate the time I can spend with you today and update you on the project. So since the last time I was at the podium and showed you the concept, things have changed a little bit in response to your comments and also market conditions. So to start off with, we have pretty much moved all of our structures from the south side of the site to the north. We had a building down where you see the triangle for the shot put off to the bottom right corner, that used to be where the visitors' building was. And so that was moved essentially up to where Building A is, because we had to cut some square footage. And so Building A is now the visitors' side in our storage area. Building B is the home side, where the tickets and some other home-related activities are. There's a weight room over there. And that hasn't changed much. And then underneath the grandstands, we'll show in later slides, underneath the home side, which is closest to Ezra Charles at the top, that is where the bathrooms are for the facility. And then the stands for the visitors are on the south side. Overall, not much has changed, just some subtle things. So just another bird's-eye view to give you your bearings. So our main entrance is still the same, we have the plaza, which is cat-a-corner to Taft High School Plaza, across the street on Ezra Charles. We have our main gateway still, and there's a visitors' gateway as well, the small one to the left of the ticket booth. And then once you go through the main gates, you're sort of in the main concourse, which gets you to the grandstands, the bathrooms, and concessions at the far end. Field pretty much looks the same, we've upgraded the logos and the graphics, to give you an idea what that's going to look like. And lights are pretty much the same, we still have four poles, and the neighbors are very much aware of that and asking questions. So this is just more of a black-and-white working drawing, just to show you some of the arrangements inside the buildings as it relates to the site. Just to remind you of the topography, since things are starting to shape out, you see the dirt's been scraped, it's mud, pretty much right now. We're going from high to low. So on the right side of the plan, we're at the high end, and we're going to slope low over towards Cutter on the left side. And so you're going to start seeing some benching as we cut the dirt and make a table, essentially, for the field and for the track. So that's in progress now. So now we're moving into the building plans. This is Building A, which is the visitors' side, and we have one locker room for the visiting team, with about 38 or 39 lockers. And there's a multipurpose space next to that, which we've pretty much shelved the space to determine what we're going to do in there exactly later, but it's available for multipurpose use. We have our concession stand on the right-hand side, and that's pretty much the same as it was before. We have three serving windows and various amenities for the concessions. Team and field storage, track and field storage is off on the left-hand side, and it's a pretty packed area, trying to get all of your pads and hurdles and stuff in there. We still have our restrooms for the officials, two of those, and then our enclosed dumpster area, since it's in such a prominent corner, we wanted to make sure that folks on Ezra Charles do not have to see the trash. This is Building B, which is our home side, so we have our home locker room, a little bit bigger than the visitors' side, one or two lockers more. And right next to that is the weight room, and there's some facilities there for the purpose of the weights, our ticket booth area, and then more storage and more mechanical space for the building. So pretty simple building. Bathrooms are pretty much, you know, what they look like. We've got about, I'd say about 50 bathrooms plus between the two, and they're pretty much the same. They flank the entrance going into the home stands, so you go between the gap between those buildings, then get up into the stands. And more bird's-eye views, so we'll sort of be flying around and giving you, you know, the pretty pictures now as we go through the site. So more ground level as the drone sank down, this is what you would see crossing the street. Hopefully, you're not stopping to take pictures while traffic zooms by. Now you're in the concourse, you've made it through the gate, and you're walking down to the stands, and the concessions is in the background at the far end of the view. We've got some ornamentation on the building to sort of hide the underside of the grandstands. We have sort of a gateway in the center, where CPS is spelled out and the initials, and then our crow's nest on top for the press. And this is sort of the opposite corner view, so now you've just gotten your snack, and you're about to walk back towards the stands, this is what you would see in the gateway in the distance. And then this is the front-on view, so if you were to get out of your car and park right in front of the center of the stands and look through the gate and the fence, this is your view. I believe that is it for the pictures.
Thank you. Do board members have questions or comments? Mr. Davis?
You know, I got a bunch of questions. The bricks or pavers that the Alumni Association was requesting, did you figure that out? How is that progress going?
So they're supposed to get back with us by the end of this month on the number of pavers that they sold, and we have a spaced earmarked for those. So the area is going to be determined by the number that they give us.
See, what's the, if, I guess this is Building A, the one that you said is scheduled to be late August, what's the plan if we don't reach that date? Are we going to reschedule games? Are we going to? I know we promised the public to be ready by the season, so what is our plan if we're not?
Yeah, so our strategy is that we can still get a certificate of occupancy if we have the field and the grandstands and the restrooms complete. We're also going to have the home visitors', or the home locker room and the ticket building complete. So we may have to use the locker room facilities at Taft High School, which we think will be allowable by the city.
And then what would your concession plan be?
So we'll have to work with whoever the concession vendor ends up being, if it's Ollie's or someone else, on how we can make that happen. So, but we feel fairly certain that the city will allow us to occupy the building with that strategy.
I don't think I'm as concerned about the city allowing occupancy as I am about the promise to be ready by the time football season started, which is two different things. Because you can occupy the stadium and not be ready for football, like, and I just want to make sure that we're communicating the discrepancies in advance, so that the public knows what ready means. Because ready won't mean we'll have a concession stand, we'll be having a Plan B on concessions.
Correct.
So I'm just trying to make sure we stay clear.
So Board Member Davis, we'll be working with Josh Harden to put together a contingency plan in the event that the building or the facility is not ready for occupancy. So we'll actually work on a plan for that starting tomorrow.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for that.
We do have a contingency plan, so we're each game is scheduled right now, potentially at Stargill for three weeks. We have another stadium that's ready to step in as a backup. So the other facility, the Moogwood, the S-T-I, Long and Wibbrow, we're ready to be at Stargill. If we're not, we've got a backup ready to go.
Well, that's a backup for the game, but that's not a backup for the promise that I'm concerned with. I'm just, I'm not concerned with whether Taft plays 10 games from August, the second week in August, or the first week in September. I'm only concerned with the promise that was made, that the stadium was going to be ready by the time the season starts. That's my only concern. Thank you, Superintendent Mitchell. Now, the scoreboard, there was a lot of talk about the scoreboard being highly technological. Where are we at with the scoreboard?
So we're working with a vendor right now to come up with a digital scoreboard component. And so we just got those designs literally about 30 minutes ago, so we will gladly share those with you as soon as we work through the details.
That's awesome. I certainly expect us to have a top-of-the-line, you know, audiovisual presentation, and something even better than what we have with Thron in regards to the sound, since this is our, going to be our premier stadium. Thanks, Robyn, and I forget your name?
David Hester.
David, I do remember having a drink with you, but I just forgot your name. Thank you, David, thank you, Robyn.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Ms. Bolton?
Yes, Mr. Davis, thanks for asking about the scoreboard. I think we said state-of-the-art, and that's what we want. That whole area is high-tech. It's a great high-tech campus. I have a couple of questions beyond that. The connection, the flow, the possibility of a connection with Hayes-Porter, have we maintained that in the design, so that the young children that are in that building, which is just across the street as well, they will think of this stadium as part of their school? Where might that be?
So we, Dave's going to pull it up, but we made an actual physical pedestrian connection, so the kids from Hayes-Porter can just walk across Clark Street and get into the stadium.
That's great, thank you. Also then, the state-of-the-art scoreboard, yes, but what about the telecast radio capability in the, what did you call it, the catbird seat or whatever, in the, the people that are calling? are calling the play-by-play? Do we, will we have the kind of materials that we need to televise, stream our games just as the suburban districts do so often?
Yes.
Okay? And then there would be enough of a studio up there that perhaps people interested in radio and television could have at least a learning facility on-site?
So we'll have, you know, the press box piece, which is enclosed, which Old Stargol had, right? But in addition to that, we're doing a platform, platform above that's covered for that video component so that you can really get some high-end shots as well. And then we are looking at the opportunity to do some streaming and possibly into the locker rooms as well.
Okay. All right. And then the community room, you mentioned that still is on the design. That's great. And would be accessible without necessarily the security of the whole facility being in question?
Correct. From, from the plaza.
Okay. Then almost, I think this is close to the last, then there is supposed to be some sort of a mural? Is that still, or at least there was some discussion about capturing either the history of sports or whatever at CPS, or the history of the community? I mean, is there an available surface for that? Or is that kind of gone by the wayside?
Yeah. At one time, we had talked about putting some, like a timeline on signage on the brick piers along Ezra Charles, that, the columns that held the fence. We've since removed the, the brick columns and we just have the ornamental fence, but there's certainly opportunities on the buildings in the plaza to do multiple, there's, there's a lot of wall space.
That would be great if we can look at that, just because we do have a very, very proud sports history. And since it's not only just Taft that is using this facility, but it really will commemorate sports throughout the, of course, it's, it's on Ezra Charles Street, so it doesn't get any better than that. But that would be important. I'd like to see that. I know that the artworks people have expressed some interest in helping. And I know too, the most compelling testimony we heard in all of these efforts was really from the community and their great fear that somehow the history of their neighborhood would somehow be lost. And so I think that to honor them and that neighborhood too, which is so historic, we, let's be thinking about capturing both of those histories. And the city's been helpful, hopefully?
Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Mr. Messer, followed by Mr. Morosky.
Thank you. And I won't repeat any of the previous questions, but obviously you were listening when the, the board gave some input previously, so thank you for that, especially for the branding piece, because I don't think, now looking at the pictures, there's any question that people will know that this is a Cincinnati Public Schools stadium and one that I think everyone will be very proud of. So just two things that I have. Number one, we expressed, you know, a definite interest to meet and exceed our minority-owned business suppliers in doing this project. Could you give an update on our progress there?
Yeah. I'm going to flip forward to a spreadsheet. So our second bid package, which is the building component, remember, Bid Pack One was just earthwork, site work. Bid Pack Two is the building component. They are still bringing their subs onboard, so we don't necessarily have all of the workforce identified for Bid Pack Two yet. And as soon as those contractors come onboard, we'll add them to the spreadsheet. So what you're seeing here is, the upper spreadsheet is the workforce inclusion. And so what I did was did number of employees for the company, male, female, and then on the right-hand side is minority inclusion for that particular company. And then we have a, a key indicator as to the type of minority. So you can see where we are for workforce, for the, for the contractors that are currently on-site. And then the, the lower spreadsheet is the business inclusion. So these are the businesses that would be hiring the workforce. So we identified them as small business enterprise, minority business, female-owned business, whether they were local or not, number of employees, male, female, and the number of employees that are minority, male, female. So that's, that's where we are to date.
Thank you. I, I, I wish we could see that for all of our public funds in that way. Well done on that representation. Thank you. The only other question, when we initially kind of went through that, I just read an article about a transgender athlete a couple of weeks before we had that presentation. And so I ask about what our plans would be, and, and so where does that fit into your, your plans here?
I'm going to flip backwards. So we did make arrangements and accommodations for, so we've got some bathrooms in each facility. So two shown here that could be gender neutral, as well as, if you see, this would be the home locker room and the visitor locker room is almost identical, similar, that we've got a separate toilet room with locker facility there as well that could be gender neutral.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Morosky.
That's fantastic. Thank you, President Jones. I'm just going to piggyback off from my Student Achievement Committee colleagues, Ms. Bolton and, and Mr. Davis regarding the, like the signage, whether it's the athletic history or murals, et cetera. I just, and I'll be quick. I just want to reiterate that it wasn't just, and I think you touched on this briefly, that, at least I was under the impression, and I would like to see if it's not already being talked about, not just the CPS athletic history, but the history of achievement in the West End neighborhood period. And the last we spoke about, and I could be wrong, and that's common, we had discussed having a sort of plaque or a wall in that open courtyard place so that people could see it from the street, so that it was noticeable. Whether it's a mural, I don't recall the mural idea so much as I do, I think, a Lidl Park, and there's all those plaques about when, when that area downtown was called the Bottoms, and it commemorates the people that lived in the Bottoms and sort of their legacy. And so I was thinking right there on the inside, so that the, the neighborhood could be celebrated as well. Because again, to Ms. Bolton's point, I remember that was the one thing I heard loud and clear, is that the, the neighborhood's legacy would be steamrolled yet again. And we want to make sure that we not only don't do that, but that we add to the legacy of the neighborhood. So I just wanted to repeat that.
Yeah, absolutely. And like I said, I think we've got lots of opportunities to, to do that.
For sure. Thanks. And this looks great, Elvarn. Thank you. Yeah.
Other comments or questions?
Okay. Thanks a lot, Robin and David. Thank you so much. We look forward to the next report, when you'll tell us that we're almost done, right? Superintendent?
So keeping within the athletics theme, we thought it might be a good idea for you to have an update on athletics. And so I've asked Josh Harden and his team, Josh is the manager for athletics, to come forward to talk to you about the really exciting work that's taking place with our student athletes, particularly as it relates to their leadership in our district.
Thank you Superintendent Mitchell, Treasurer Wagner, Board President Jones, Vice President Messer, and the board for having us today. Today, we will do our best to keep it at 10 minutes, but we'll go over just a few minutes, so sorry in advance. We did put together a recap, hey! We put together a recap video for you guys on what we've done to date this year, put together a PowerPoint presentation to fill in the blanks, and then we will be recognizing some excellent scholar athletes and their families that joined us this evening. Before we get started with the recap video, I'd like to take a second to recognize a group that, in collaboration with activities beyond the classroom and CPS, we have a group of staff members here today that, you know, so many times are overlooked, but these, these staff members will show up to school at the start of a school day, will be there answering emails, phone calls, organizing, and communicating throughout the school day, all to set up for an event that starts at 4:00 and that goes through 9:00, breaks down after that event, counts the money, communicates to all the staff, breaks down everything, and is usually leaving around 10:00 at night. I'd ask our athletic directors to stand. All right, now to our athletics recap video.
Glad to introduce more elementary athletics this school year. In collaboration with activities beyond the classroom, we were able to impact more students in our community. In girls' soccer, we were able to increase participation and add game competition between eight of our schools. Through a partnership with the YMCA, we grew swim safety training sessions. We impacted 175 kids from 23 schools with volleyball training led by CPS alone. The boys' and girls' basketball camp at Whiffel High School impacted 140 kids from 24 schools.
To all my girls' staff, we're the ones.
And of course soccer. In partnership with FC Cincinnati, Cincinnati United, Kingshammer, and Zegu University, we grew from eight schools to 14 schools, impacting over 300 kids. We introduced the Academic and Athletic Accountability Pathway to focus on the importance of education-based athletics and offer our student athletes more support and resources.
ACT prep, the boot camp, it will help me reach my goal because, going to my scholarship school, I need one more point on my ACT. So the boot camp will help because it's not just for kids in high school, it'll help kids out of high school.
In our second year of the Athlete of the Month program, we have added a pep rally presentation and video recognition for our deserving student athletes.
All right, everybody, thanks for being here. The Cincinnati Public Schools Athlete of the Month awards model student athletes throughout the district that are active in the community, do a good job in the classroom, and of course excel on the field. Ty Reese and Tracy, we're nominated by the coaches here at Wall Hill for the first time ever in the same month. We have one school with both student athletes of the month. Ty Reese and Tracy, congratulations on your award. Keep up the good work, guys.
This is what it's all about, promoting and recognizing our student leader.
Well, for one, the material leaders, so we happily all feel in, in class, and so we last week to be a statement to show my other classmates that we should be good at class again.
So just, just honor the nominated, like, faculty, because we just, and show them that we're all working, following them, and just promote them all this year.
We invited 82 student leaders representing all CPS high schools to provide feedback for the growth of the AAA pathway and planning the district-wide leadership project.
There are 38 triple-A pathway athletes. I think, I didn't, we don't spend enough time talking about triple-A. Everybody in that building is looking up to you.
We invited all coaches and athletic leaders in the district to introduce the AAA pathway and provide our coaches with leadership development, more support, and resources.
We're going to rank up second table. In those second tables, we're going to put ACT in that same deep red.
All three years remain, the year of children athletes is an opportunity and a chance to be overly equipped and ready to help one of our children.
I thought today was an absolutely amazing day, just to say, come to school athletics. Suddenly, it's a very powerful day for not only our athletic directors and our coaches, but our students, because today is developed for the students and with the students in mind.
I care, I collaborate, I continuously improve, and I commit to success. I am CPS.
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 All right, so each of those highlights in that video has its own one-to-two-minute video highlighting our student athletes and what we're offering and providing. That can be found on our CPS Athletics YouTube page, as well as Facebook and Twitter. And I'd like to take a second to thank Joy Matose, I think Joy's here, Joy, stand up here. Joy Matose and Matose Visuals, who's put together all of our videos. He put together that video, and he's done every Student Athlete of the Month video. He's gone around the city, traveled with our team down to Dayton to do a documentary of our kids that are playing in the district tournament. Aiken, he's going to follow Aiken. Usually when I say Aiken, you say Swoop, so I was waiting for that. So just give it up for, for Joy Matose. Give it up for Joy. So the three topics that we'll present on today are the AAA pathway and, and the pilot year that we had this year, the growth of elementary athletics, and our Athlete of the Month program. At the end of the school year last year, we collaborated with our college manager, Kayla Ritter-Rickles, Tanya Ficklin, the district lead counselor, and really talked about ways that we could improve support and resources to allow for educational success for our student athletes. We brought on a grad student intern, Steph Price, to assist with the implementation of the AAA pathway. And through our collaboration with ABC, we were able to bring on Armin Tatum, and the district coordinator for the AAA pathway program. We collaborated with student athletes and did a survey, coaches and ADs, did some, some planning sessions with them, and were able to put together a finalized AAA pathway manual and bring in 15 supplemental positions to impact students at every one of our high schools. This year, going into this year, we've done a few things. So Steph and Armin provided ongoing training and support for all of our AAA coaches to impact 2,000 fall athletes and nearly 1,800 winter athletes. We hosted, as you saw on the video, an ACT boot camp. The ACT boot camp saw over 22 kids participating with the kids that we have pre and post results for, for the ACT. We saw a score increase in two-thirds of those participants. We've had a collaboration with a strength and conditioning group to come in and provide equitable strength and conditioning for our student athletes. A great collaboration with Strive Partnership to allow for better data collection. We hope that the next time we come, we'll have lots of data to share with you in regards to the AAA pathway and the growth. Student athlete leadership teams, as you saw, as you saw in the video, Ozzy came and presented to our student athlete leaders. We had 80 student athlete leaders representing all of our high schools at this, at the Ed Center. We talked about the AAA pathway. They gave us feedback on how we can grow the initiative to impact them more. We planned a district-wide give-back project. All the kids came together, they broke down into four groups, they presented to everybody, and they voted on which give-back project we would do. So we're excited to see that come to fruition. Moving forward, we will have a summer training series. Armin and Steph will lead coaches, athletic directors, student athletes, our AAA coaches through a training series. The last training series will include, and we've confirmed this with Kayla Ritter-Rickles, but will include our school counselors, our AAA academic coaches, and our school ADs. We'll, we'll present to them, I will, Kayla will, Armin will, about the AAA pathway initiative. We'll present to them, I will, Kayla will, Armin will, about the AAA pathway initiative, and then we'll break out into breakout sessions, and the Clark Group will go there, and then the Withrow Group. So they'll have that opportunity to work together and really start off the school year right. We'll continue to work with Strive to grow the data analysis behind it, continue to support resources for ADs, coaches, and our student athletes. A big thing that we heard from our student athletes was they do want more study tables. They want more mentoring sessions with our AAA coaches. So through the data analysis that Strive is able to provide, it'll take away from the time that our AAA coaches are doing grade checks and allow for more time to meet with and mentor our student athletes. And transition into our CPS and ABC partnership. As we said, this partnership has been great. We, myself, Brian Leschner, and Bill Miles met at the start of this school year, and we talked about how we could strengthen this partnership and grow the relationship. So on a monthly basis, we're now doing joint staff meetings, ABC and CPS. Everybody here, including everybody in the ABC office, meet on a monthly basis to talk about joint initiatives and goals on impacting student athletes and students in Cincinnati Public Schools. We worked on an internal collaboration manual to allow for growth in elementary athletics. In the past, extracurriculars has been kind of overseen on the elementary side by activities beyond the classroom, but we were happy to bring on Brent, as we presented last year, in a full-time capacity to be able to grow elementary athletics, and we'll share those now. So we've got three areas of elementary athletics, our weekend camps and clinics, after-school programs, and then organized scrimmage and competition. And you saw a lot of that in the video, but the volleyball clinic had 175 students from 23 schools, basketball camps at Withrow had 140 students at 24 schools. Our after-school programming, we were able to take our foot-saw program that we started last year from eight schools and grow it to 14 schools this year. The Fun and Bat Program, 7 to 11. Through Brent being able to secure some grants, we were able to offer the swim safety program for three schools this year and the USA volleyball program in two. This was the fun stuff here, that organized competition. So Brent was able to take the ABC elementary model that they had for soccer where they were running practices and drills and turn it into competition. We had eight schools competing in that organized competition, and every game ended with that parent tunnel that you saw at the end of the video. It was pretty awesome. And then the elementary basketball program was, it was just amazing. We had 14 schools competing. You know, Brent provided the admin stuff, you know, uniforms for the, for the schools, making sure they had coaches in place, officials at the games. But then what happened organically was amazing. We saw every seat was filled. We had an elementary game with Spencer versus South Avondale, and there was not one seat remaining in that crowd. And then we saw things like Spencer forming a cheer program, and we had nothing to do with it, but there was a cheer team performing at, you know, at one of these games. And then Brent, you know, called me one day and said, Josh, we got a dance team performing at halftime right now. I said, record it right now. But, but so we had a dance team that just, you know, popped up and performed, and, you know, schools were taking admissions and concessions, so it was pretty amazing to see. And then we have our track and field program that will be starting in the spring, where it'll be eight to 10 schools competing in competition, and then in T-ball, we'll have three schools. So we're excited about the growth in elementary athletics, the AAA pathway initiative, and of course, a part of that initiative is recognizing our scholar athletes. And I'll pass it over to Ricky Miller, who will present our great scholar athletes and their families that have been waiting very patiently.
Thank you, Josh. Board members, thank you for having us back again this year, and I'm very excited to share some of the incredible things that our students have accomplished this year. It's my pleasure to share that information about our Student Athlete of the Month program and its ongoing growth. As an athletic department, it's our mission to give students more opportunities, as well as recognize their accomplishments on and off their field or court. The CPS Athlete of the Month program embodies all of that, setting a standard for what we believe is a complete and model student athlete. Through help from program sponsors like Dick's Sporting Goods, the Reds Community Fund, FC Cincinnati, United Dairy Farmers, Bruegger's Bagels, Gatorade, and most recently, Radio One and the Wiz, we've been able to send Joy, our videographer, to capture each presentation at every high school and then share that on a higher level. Like you saw in our video, we bring groups of students together to celebrate with their friends, support each other, and then we follow those presentations with one-on-one interviews with the athletes explaining the reasons that they were selected. Another significant piece of the program is the Dave Durker Scholarship. At the end of the school year, each one of these students, plus our remaining athletes that we will award for the remaining months, will be eligible to apply for that scholarship, and the winner will receive $2,000 to go towards their college education, as well as a free laptop. So at this time, our students are on stage, and we'll allow them to introduce themselves. But before we do that, I just want to take a moment to say thank you to all of our students, their parents, coaches, athletic directors, principals, and of course, the board for not only being here tonight, but supporting our kids and allowing them to grow through athletics. So give them a hand.
Hi, my name is Dajae. I come from Houston High School. I'm a senior, and I was elected for the month of December.
Can we, we can't hear you.
I'm sorry. Hi, my name is Dajae Hankerson. I come from Houston High School. I'm a senior, and I was nominated for the month of December.
My name's Michaela King. I go to River View East Academy. I'm a junior. I was chosen Athlete of the Month for February.
My name is Mohammed Ba. I am a senior at Schroeder High School. I play football and baseball, and I was the Athlete of the Month of October.
My name is, my name is Dartaine Battle. I'm a senior at Schroeder High School. I play basketball, football, and baseball, and I was elected for Athlete of the Month in January.
My name is Tyja Christopher. I'm a junior at Woodward. I play basketball, and I got selected for Athlete of the Month in January.
Hello, my name is Rashni. I'm from Aiken High School. I'm a sophomore at Aiken High School. I play soccer, I run cross country. Yeah, thank you.
And I want to add something about Rashni real quick. She was nominated by her coach for cross country, Aaron Parker, who was recently awarded the 2018 Cincinnati Woodward Trust Teacher of the Year.
My name is Tricia Young. I'm a cheerleader and senior at Walnut Hills High School, and I was nominated for November Athlete of the Month.
Hey, my name, oh, can you hear me?
Say that again.
Can you hear me? Okay. Hey, my name is Tyrese Doran. I go to, I want to, Tricia, I'm a junior. I play football, and I was elected for the month of November.
Hello, my name is Reggie Taylor-Ben. I'm a senior at Western Hills High School. I play football, baseball, and I wrestle. I was nominated for December.
Hello, my name is Alex Solomon. I'm from Aiken High School. I'm a senior, and I play football, basketball, and I run track, and I was elected Athlete of the Month for the month of February.
And as we get to our final student here, we'd just like to point out that this evening is the first time that she will be recognized as Athlete of the Month for March.
Hi, my name is Simone Christman. I'm a senior at Gamble Montessori, and I play basketball, and I was nominated for Athlete of the Month of March.
Congratulations, guys. Thank you all for being here tonight. And before we wrap things up, we'd just like for all the parents and family members of our student athletes of the month to stand and be recognized. None of this would be possible without your support, and we appreciate everything you do.
That's all I got.
Okay. Thank you so much for the presentation. Do board members have questions or comments? Mr. Davis.
I am unapologetically biased to your department. I hope everybody knows that by now. I'm also super hard on Josh, so, and I used to coach Josh, if you, if you guys did not know. So that makes me real old. The monthly report, I'm sorry, the monthly meeting that you have with ABC, and I think you said another department, can you make sure I get a report of that monthly meeting? As the board's ABC liaison, I think that's important that I be able and capable of sharing with the board how staff is working with ABC. And then we can keep up Mr. Tatum, make sure he's doing his job.
No doubt about it. Yeah, we do have minutes from those meetings, so make sure that you're copied on that going forward.
Another admission, Mr. Tatum was, Coach Tatum was a coach of my son, one of my coaches' favorite sons, one of my son's favorite coaches, and definitely tore our heart when he went to Westside from Walnut Hills. The camps and clinics, are those only offered at the elementary school level?
At this time, yes. We're focusing on the elementary school, on the camps and clinics, and a fun thing about them is having the high school kids a part of those camps and clinics as coaches to have that collaboration, connection, and elementary and high school. We are partnering up with others to provide camps for the high school level, football camps. I know our new hire at Withrow High School, Coach Jones, and Withrow will be hosting a football camp there to help our kids with exposure on the college level, but we're looking at other camps as well.
As part of the data draw from the partnership you have with Strive, will we be able to see the performance of student athletes versus regular students in regards to academics, enlisting, and employment?
Right now, the, the main goal with, with the Strive partnership is the data collection on GPAs, ACT scores, attendance rates for our student athletes. We did talk to them about being able to look at the numbers of student athletes versus non-student athletes as well. So they are, they just shared a report with us literally yesterday that we opened up and looked at, and there was, it was some great data that we're looking forward to being able to share with you guys.
My, my last question, and I appreciate your, I appreciate your presentation. I appreciate all your works except Ricky's. I'm just joking. I see you more than anybody. I appreciate all you guys' work. The athletes, half of them have left, but I'm extremely impressed by your efforts. The ADs, you guys know how much I appreciate the work that you do. I've been in each of your buildings, at all your games, and we're just, I'm just really, I think it's really important. I would not be sitting here with three degrees if it weren't for Walnut Hills High School and its athletics program in the late, in the late 70s. So I just want to say thank you. My last question, Josh, is are we, do we make money in athletics, and are we, and are we trying to? Because I often see a lot of open seats, and I'm not really seeing as much marketing per school. Like, of course, Thursday, everybody will be getting ready to go to Aiken. I'm sure they'll have a bus. Last week with Hughes, they had a student bus, but I don't know why we have to wait to the playoffs to have a student bus. Like, that made so much sense. It was $10, kids got a snack and a ticket, and it was rocking the mason, right? Do we, do we have plans to, to try to make money at this sports thing?
Right, so, you know, each school does make money with their Fund 300 account and, you know, gate admission concessions. And then we work together with a collaboration with ABC to go over each school's budget, look at their budget, and what they're bringing in on an annual basis, and what they're going to be expensing on an annual basis. So they are making money to be able to impact their program. One thing we're doing in the summer planning series that I mentioned is we're bringing all the athletic directors from all the schools together, kind of in a war room style, I think I might have shared that with you earlier, but to talk about different ways that we can collaborate amongst our schools to do things like grow attendance at our games. You know, how can we all look at our schedules for the, for the next school year and see how we can collaborate on a special event one week where all the schools have the elementary kids into, to watch a football game or to a basketball game, and call it the elementary, CPS Elementary Week? But how we can come together to be able to grow those numbers to make a bigger impact.
I appreciate you, Jake. Thanks again.
Appreciate you.
Other questions or comments? I, okay, Mr. Morosky.
Thank you so much, Josh, for the presentation, everybody. So while I may golf, I wouldn't consider myself an athlete. However, having been a dean of students and a teacher, I know how important any extracurricular is to academic success, and just in the short time I've been here and knowing you before I got here and you're getting hired, the, what's happened has truly remarkable. And that presentation, I got a little choked up a couple times, that video, and I went to try to find it. You're gonna have to send it to me. I couldn't find it. I want to share it with people. It's really, really impressive in what everybody's done, and there's so many people that are new to this, just in the past year, and the fact that it's clicking along like this is mind-boggling. So I don't want to rant on and on. I do want to just say, I'm really interested through student achievement, you've come to us a number of times, how we can continue to support you, particularly with the proliferation of the grade school athletics. And, and what you've already done there is remarkable, and I just want to let you know and to say in public session that I want to be a part of that solution and continuing to support it. As you know, you've come to some of our meetings, and I've gotten somewhat bullish about an hour of physical activity a day in all of our schools, and Dr. Williams has got us to, we're getting there. I'm gonna continue to be in a pain about it, and I know how important that is because to me, while I may not be an athlete, I am an equity guy, and to me, all of this is wrapped up in equity. And the solutions and the success that we saw tonight, in the back of the young girl's hoodie from Gamble says it best, the back of her hoodie said, "I have options." And that, to me, is, is it. And so I just want to wrap up by saying thank you, and one last thing that may not be related directly to athletics but has impacted our work in student achievement district-wide is you all really spearheaded a lot of things within our discipline code through your Fan Code of Conduct. That, as you know, we then took and expanded it to just Participant Code of Conduct, which has also influenced district-wide behavior policies and procedures. So y'all are leading in more ways than that, whether you know it or not, and I just wanted to thank all of the athletic directors and Josh and your team for the presentation.
Thank you.
Just one closing comment, and I'm gonna be brief. As a former coach, I coached fast pitch softball at Taft High School for six years. I don't see any softball players up here, so I expect to see that next year.
It's not spring yet.
Okay, but I'm, okay.
They got their time, these next couple months, all theirs.
Okay, but I, what I have appreciated, Mr. Harden, is this is my fourth year on the board, and I have seen a steady progression of building a solid foundation for our athletic program. And that's what it takes. We can't expect to win, and healthy competition is good. We can't expect to win when we don't have the foundation and the basics. And that's what And that's what I've seen over the past three or four years. So I'm very, very appreciative to you and your staff and all of those folks who contribute to your support, even Mr. Davis, okay? So I say, in closing, keep informing us of how things are going, and we want to continue to build this spirit that I am feeling now about how good our teams are and the fact that these young people are moving on in higher ed or employment or enlisting or whatever. And they are... It's a very holistic kind of approach. They are well-rounded. And so I appreciate that very much, and we thank you so much for your presentation.
All right. Thank you.
We have one more presentation. Superintendent?
Two more. Two more? Oh. So keeping in line with our physical fitness theme for the evening, we have a physical education update that's specifically around curriculum, and we have Molly Critcher. Critchell. I'm sorry. Critchell. It's hard to say. Molly Critchell. She says it's like Mitchell, but with a CR. So she will be down in just a moment. And she is being supported by the Curriculum Manager for Physical Health and Science, Dr. Jennifer Williams.
Good evening. Can you hear me? Can you hear me now?
We hope so.
Good evening?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, I was going to congratulate all of the athletes and their parents, but I think they're gone, so... Okay. So we are... I'm here. We are here to present the recommendations for our health wellness and our physical education curriculum and resource adoption. So for our recommendations for our health wellness education, first, equity. We want to bring health curriculum to all buildings for all grade levels. Second recommendation would be to include Ohio Department of Education's social, emotional learning standards throughout each grade level. Third, the City of Cincinnati's Department of Health will work with CPS and area schools of nursing to report the BMI of each student on an opt-out basis to the Ohio Department of Health. This will work to meet the Ohio Department of Education's reporting and should furthermore be overseen by the District's Wellness Committee. Our fourth recommendation is support of an annual CPS and Community Partner Health and Wellness Fair, pending donor and community financial support for 10th grade students. And then finally, to our resources, for K-8, we recommend the Health Smart Curriculum. In order to help our K-8 PE teachers comply with the Ohio Revised Code 3313.60, we feel it's essential for them to have a resource for them to be able to use to lesson plan. So that is our recommendation for the K-8 teachers. And then for high school, we recommend the Good Heart Wilcox Comprehensive Health, which is both an online resource and a text version, which they align perfectly page-number-wise and everything. So that is our health wellness education recommendations. For physical education recommendations, again, we start with equity. Inventory updates on all buildings to build equity or build quality physical education experience at all CPS schools. Digital and technical integrations in physical education courses and classrooms. The movement in physical education minutes of CPS students can be enhanced in PE classes with virtual reality and technical equipment that can bring the world and cross-curricular content into PE space. In addition, the movement and physical activity of students should be built into other... into school culture for academics, achievement, and positive behavior, which then brings us to the third one. Each CPS student should experience a minimum of 150 minutes a week of moderate to rigorous physical activity. Our plan... This goal meets the Ohio Department of Education's physical activity pilot program requirements. And how we plan to implement this is through a pilot program for the first year. So for 2019 and 2020, we plan to start with just three schools: Wynton Hills Elementary, Withrow Junior High, and Clark Montessori High School, to kind of work out the tweaks, do a quality improvement process so that we can figure out what works with school leaders, teachers, students, parents, and our curriculum manager, Dr. Williams. So it gives them the opportunity to figure out what works, recommend best practices so we know what's realistic in our classrooms, so that actually happens. And then once we figure that out, for the 2020 school year to 2021, we will recommend that, based on what we found out works, each school take those recommendations to their ILT, and then, working with those recommendations, figure out what's going to work in their building with their school culture. And our last recommendation for physical education would be the resource, which is the U.S. Games Open Curriculum, which is a free resource, which provides us with lesson plans for teachers. However, while the lesson plans are completely free and they are complete as well, the materials needed to implement them are not free. So that's where purchasing would come in for buildings. So that is our briefer presentation.
Thank you. Do board members have questions or comments? Ms. Bates?
Can we get copies of the curriculum?
Oh, yes.
Absolutely. We can make it available for you, and so we'll make sure that it makes its way over to the board office. This is just an opportunity for Curriculum Council to be able to speak with the board in terms of their recommendations as it relates to physical education. So absolutely, that, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Bolton?
Thank you very much for your presentation, and thanks for, I would say, nearly two years of work, and we've seen a great deal of it in student achievement. This, I think, began in Policy Committee last year, when indeed, curriculum as such was going to be somehow part of a policy description regarding wellness within even the wellness piece of the staff, as well as students. And it was, I think, the Policy Committee's insistence at that time that we actually would love to see our professionals in the health and physical education departments produce an actual curriculum that could be adopted and that we could agree with and adopt the needed materials. And I... It's my understanding, too, that we actually now have a Curriculum Council with representation from the various schools, and that's our first time to do that for, I think, PE and the health. So I think this is a great stride forward, and I do think that the board will need to see what we've seen in SAC, the actual curriculum work. And I know we've had the opportunity to see the material that we want to adopt, or that you've suggested we adopt, or at least the grouping of them, and then you all have to make the choice as the professionals. And with the health curriculum particularly, people should know that the state of Ohio does not have one, for all intents and purposes, and that locals are left to their own devices and their own professionals and their own partners to help develop it for the well-being of our children. And I, having read the curriculum and seen the curriculum, I'm very supportive of it and the materials. I would go based upon what you all are recommending. But this is a huge, huge undertaking, and it will require significant increases in staffing, because health and PE are not just kind of the also-rans if we adopt this kind of curriculum. And I know that's one of the reasons it has to be kind of put in over a time period, basically the same time period Mr. Messer is the strategic plan is. So it's a great evolution, and I applaud the folks that have put it together. And I'm pleased that we also, as a board, are charged with the responsibility of adopting and approving curriculum, which is one of our major responsibilities. And I really want to do a shout-out to the superintendent for recognizing that that is the role of the board. So thank you, Madam Superintendent. Thank you all for putting this together, and by all means, share what you've written with the board.
Will do. And thank you for your support.
You bet.
Thank you. Any additional questions or comments? Mr. Messer?
This is more just, as a newer member of the board, just how this fits then with our sex education policy or curriculum? Are they intertwined under kind of the same umbrella, or are they completely separate?
So we do... The sex ed piece will be on... It will be included unless their... Unless the student has signed an opt-out, unless their parents have signed an opt-out form. The book we plan to get? Yes. Right. So the book will have it in there. So I mean, it will be one book with all of it included. So whether the student has... The parent has signed the opt-out or not, I mean, they're going to get the same book.
So with sex ed, is that a particular grade, or is that built kind of throughout? Or is it kind of a one-time?
So... Yeah. Like K-8, like K, you kind of start with like the good touch, bad touch type thing. And then I believe in the, like, seventh and eighth grade, they do kind of go into like the safe dating, as in like the assault type thing, but not necessarily the sex, so...
Okay. So I just think that that... I mean, if it... Did you... I couldn't hear very well, but it sounded like senior? Senior?
Senior, so freshman, freshman year.
Yeah. Okay. So I would just say that that might be a bit late if we were waiting to that point to have at least some parts of the sex education.
This is off of the national health standards, and all of these books that we are ordering are in compliance and in with the national health standards.
So with the K-8 and Knowing Yourself, it does cover comprehensively all of the knowing yourself, whether it be puberty and hormonal changes, that is all included in the K-8 curriculum.
Okay.
Ms. Bolton, followed by Ms. Bates?
Yes, thank you. Just in following up with Mr. Messer, I think that when the board has an opportunity to have that curriculum, they can see the holistic approach and over an extended period of years, if you will, of success and positive viewing of oneself, life changes and body changes and what have you. So I, again, with the national standards, I think this is very good, and it is over an extended period of time. And it isn't some separate little chapter that's offered late and in the dark. This is about children developing and human beings understanding relationships and their own health. So it's a very, very comprehensive approach.
Thank you. Ms. Bates?
Yes, a couple of things. Are we planning to have any kind of public viewing of the books in advance and of the curriculum? I think that's really important before the board approves this curriculum, because we are dealing with, you know, a very sensitive subject. We have... We're a diverse district, and we have diverse families with different opinions as to how their children should be raised. So absolutely, I believe that there should be a well-publicized, at least viewing of the curriculum and the books. And I would also request that those books, at least one sample of the books, be made available to board members so we know what we're voting on. And I'm assuming this is going to be a vote.
Eventually, yeah.
We did have, on January 22nd, open viewing to the public to come in, to view all of the vendor selections as well. We also ran what are... A survey through the district's Survey Monkey on the district's website for two months to get feedback from our community about what they wanted to see in the curriculum.
So how many people came to the viewing?
We had... How many completed the survey? We probably had over 100, 150 people come to the vendor event. ELA was presenting that night, as well as PE and health wellness, but we had about 15 survey respondents from the night.
That's not very representative of our district at all. I wouldn't consider that engagement. It's probably, you know, the same dedicated people that, you know, stay very active with us. So this is something I don't want to, you know, put in place without, you know, a proper, at least vetting, or at least allowing people in the community to know that this is what we're doing, this is why we're doing it, and these are the materials and the curriculum we're using, because we have, you know, what do we have? Feedback from less than 200 people, and we have about 36,000 students that are going to be affected by this curriculum. So I would say, before we go much further, we need to get out a much broader, you know, exposure to this curriculum and to the books, and also to make sure that the board has the curriculum and samples, at least one sample of the books in our office, so we know what we're voting on.
Right. Okay. Mr. Morosky?
Thank you, President Jones. And thanks to the Curriculum Council, Dr. Williams and your team for getting us to this point. And I would echo what Board Member Bates is saying. Obviously, we do need robust community input, particularly for something that's as big and as unnecessarily controversial as this, but it is, all the same, which is why the Curriculum Council has had members of the public on it. Many people have gone to those meetings. We've had regular updates at student achievement. I'm just saying, to your point, that's why in student achievement, we have been so adamant about getting these updates, because it is going to be a sensitive issue. And if anybody can goes back and pull their record, they'll see it. So I know that Board Member Bolton and I attended the curriculum fair and looked through the books. I think it's a great idea to have one in the board office. And then also, to your point about the vote, you may recall when we were all... You, myself, and Ms. Bolton were on policy together. Board Member Bolton, right when we got to the... Right at the end, in the 11th hour, she added, "Let's put 'board-approved' before medically-scientifically-accurate curriculum." So it will absolutely have to be board-approved, too. But I agree, that was something like this, we need to be sure that our Ts are crossed multiple times, because it is so important.
Ms. Bolton?
Very quickly, I think... I believe it's the law that requires any curriculum to be on display, usually in a board office area, so that the public has access to it, to review it prior to adoption. So I think you've done most of those steps along the way. I know there's a table outside of curriculum office now with a number of things on display, but I think you're right that it'd be great in this month, prior to spring break or prior to an adoption, that we meet that criteria. And again, I've been on the board now 12 years, and only in the last two years have I've seen the board be even permitted to participate in the development and the adoption regarding curriculum. So this is a very important moment. And frankly, in those 12 years, prior to last year's adoption of social studies, the only adoption I can remember was a health book adoption, which is still in the board office, which I don't know was ever used or not. But echoing one of the police people of curriculum, which is Mrs. Bates, we're right and you're right to have what is... right to have what is being proposed to be adopted in the board office for public observation.
Thank you so much. Sounds like, thank you for the presentation. It's good to hear that we're moving in this direction with the curriculum. I do think we still have some more work to do. Board members will need to read it, and we also need to give some consideration on how we engage the public differently so that we can make sure that we get their input and their feedback. So thank you again so much. Thank you. Superintendent, last presentation.
So, the last presentation is regarding healthy start times.
Hello. I'm certainly very grateful to be here and I appreciate the opportunity to present for you. The slides are up, but you should have a copy of them that was placed at your desk.
Thank you.
My name is Jilda Vargas Adams. I'm a CPS parent, I'm a pediatrician, and I'm here on behalf of the community advocates who are looking to see all of CPS high school students have a healthy school start time. Tonight, I will present details of our plan to support the district with transportation solutions that answer that challenge of having enough buses at the right hours of the day for healthy start times. Briefly, however, I would like to review why this is so important. I know you are all well aware, but having children, the opportunity to start school at 8:30 improves things like the daily attendance at school, it improves grades and standardized test scores, it reduces disciplinary actions, and those all-important outcomes of graduation rates and college attendance go up in meaningful ways. What's also really important in our community is it gives children an opportunity to travel in the daylight. In Cincinnati, where 13 high school students were struck by vehicles this year and one died, they are spending a lot of hours in the dark traveling to school. If you leave at 6:30 in the morning, which is not at all uncommon for our early start schools, 82% of those days, you'll be in the dark. If you leave at 7:30 in the morning, only seven days out of the school year will be dark. How do we define a healthy start time? Well, the American Academy of Pediatrics and lots of other really important and accomplished professional groups say it's 8:30 in the morning. There may be a piece of that that moves a little bit, especially if we can reduce travel time so students leave their homes later. But for us, it's also very important that they travel in daylight, that we maintain the hours of instruction that they should have at school, and that the day ends at 3:30 or 4 o'clock so there's time for all those extracurriculars. So these are all priorities for us. We just want to permit students to sleep later because that's what their physiology demands. What's going on right now? Well, in CPS, most high schools have a healthy start, but seven of our high schools are not in compliance. This needs to be fixed, and now is the time to reinvent, to transform transportation, and to fix this problem at the same time. As Member Davis said not so long ago, I'm paraphrasing, but fixing school start times in transportation is a disruption, but sometimes that's the right thing to do. The district has worked hard and should be congratulated for working with the community to understand their perspectives, and the district's been rewarded with evidence of broad support for later start times. We didn't have 15 respondents to that thought exchange, it was almost 1,200 respondents. People have spoken, and there is broad support for later start times. There are concerns, but the community is resilient and accepting of change, especially when it's for the best of the students. For example, these seven high schools handled an earlier start time this year that was a bit of a surprise in order to allow equitable instruction hours. So, the community is ready to hear this. That being said, three main issues. Student employment, we know that students work after school and that their schedules need to permit this to continue. It's another opportunity for the district to develop integrated employment options. What about childcare? A lot of students provide care for their younger siblings. We know this, but they're all alternatives because the grade schools often have before and after-school care available. And in fact, the number of hours that that high school student is out of the home is still the same. It's just the available hours have moved from afternoon to evening. And then, of course, sports and extracurriculars, very important today. I actually included part of one of the emails that we got from Mr. Harden expressing his support for taking care of the students and doing what's best for them. There are some concerns around facility availability, and the one cost that you sometimes see when you read about this nationally is outdoor lighting for sports activities, but that's a small cost compared to other things. And of course, we see students benefiting because their athletic performance improves, injury rates go down, and you can match the needs for scheduling competitions with other schools because our surrounding communities are moving to healthy starts as well. But right now, I really want to talk about the next steps for us. Change is not easy, but this district has already done quite a bit to work through the barriers to implementation. Schedules and operations have been dealt with at over half the high schools already. That's doable. From a cost standpoint, what we're proposing is largely cost-neutral. And so tonight, I want to explore with you that third challenge of the logistics of transportation. Our plan will start with a simple step. Euler is a K through 12 school, many of those students already ride yellow buses. The younger students can start school early. If it moves to the latest tier of yellow bus transportation, we fixed that in a straightforward fashion. But the other students ride extra-service Metro buses, generally speaking. Step two would require us to look at bus utilization to move Aiken, Dater, West and Withrow, and I'm going to talk about that at length today. And then, the last step would require route optimization to move the two more cumbersome schools to Correct, which are Clark and Walnut. We believe that that could be accomplished by school year 2021. So again, we'll talk briefly about these three phases: bus utilization, route optimization, and evaluation and revision. Phase one allows us to demonstrate how Metro can move existing extra-service routes to meet healthy start times for thousands more students without significant alteration in the need for buses or operators. This would be cost-neutral for the district, and Metro would not need to change routes or increase the number of buses serving the high schools or the downtown rush. This process of bus utilization for us begins with just establishing current usage of buses and operators, I will show that to you today, and exploring options to maintain or reduce overall utilization and still being able to delay some of those extra-service routes. We can model moving school by school by different amounts of time and see which ones meet the needs. And this allows us to delineate feasible solutions for Metro to keep the current routes and improve the schedule for the high school students without needing more buses or drivers. So we have developed, with the help of Ted Tolleson, a fabulous data scientist, computer scientist guy, a model that looks at Metro buses in motion in five-minute increments. This is from data about two weeks old. And this will tell us, when Metro announced, "We can't move all, we can't move all these students to 8:30 starts," they're right. They don't have the buses. But there are options that allow us to make a good dent in the problem. Let me start with this first graph. It just has a blue line on it if you're flipping through. I think it's page 14. This shows Metro bus utilization. The time runs across the bottom that shows 15-minute increments, but there are 12 dots an hour on that line. And on the y-axis, you can see the number of buses in motion. You'll note that there is variability in how many buses Metro has working, with peaks particularly right around 7:00 AM and 3:00 and 4:00 PM. Now, if we try to move all of the extra-service buses for the early start schools to an 8:30 start, the red line is what happens. So, you'll see that there's a peak of almost 400 buses needed around 4:00 or 4:30. These are buses Metro doesn't have, drivers they don't employ. This is not a solution. It can't be done. And in fact, if you just move the largest high school alone and move it only to 8:15, you still develop a really big peak at about 4:30 that would be challenging to cover. But all is not lost. We explored many other models with more favorable utilization patterns. If you move to slide 17, you can see the current utilization in blue, and the red line shows what happens if you move Aiken, Dater, West and Withrow to an 8:30 start. It offers a much smaller and likely manageable increase in bus needs. And in fact, it's a lot flatter, indicating a more constant bus utilization need in the afternoon. If they moved only to 8:15, you have virtually no increase in need for buses or drivers and simply flatten out some of those peaks. Timing of each move also matters. If just the two schools, Dater and West, for example, move only to 8 o'clock, it actually creates a need for over 350 buses right around 3:15. But sometimes incremental change can lead to bigger problems than larger change. Our models show that the proposed move to 8:00 AM for only two schools results in a need for more buses, but a shift to 8:30 for the same two schools is less disruptive to the bus needs. And this is on slide 19. You keep looking at all my line graphs, I know, we're a little wonky. Moving all the way to 8:30 provides for a more consistent bus schedule pattern that may be more attractive for Metro than the current schedule, than the incremental step to 8 o'clock. We believe that the district could and should work with Metro to implement healthy start times at up to four high schools for school year 1920. This system of bus utilization modeling can help make that happen. These models can be pursued in a very short timeframe and create minimal changes to what Metro is already doing, and we're happy to share all of them with you. I also have a model that actually shows histograms with all the different schools in color. It's just awfully busy to put in a presentation like this. Following this phase one step in moving many schools to an 8:30 start, we are proposing a larger effort, we're calling the Route Reboot. And this is where we will work with our corporate community partners who have a great deal of expertise in data analytics and logistics. This would include 8451, Engage, and Directions, where they can bring those significant skills to the table to work with us. We are beginning with a problem statement that describes goals. Of course, safety is first, and then efficiency to reduce costs, create new capacity, and then to incorporate the healthy start time. With that effort, we can actually revise routes, working with Metro, not just extra-service routes, but regular Metro routes, to consolidate and reconfigure them, to reduce travel time, and to maximize occupancy on buses. Yes, this is the heaviest lift, but our Route Reboot event will revise route structures for efficiencies. This should be achievable with limited cost increases and with potential for an improved bottom line for Metro. Of course, Meridian transport models would facilitate healthy starts because transport times would be shorter, and this would allow school start times to be a bit earlier in models that utilize time leaving home rather than school start time as the parameter. The third phase that we recommend is evaluation and revision. From an outcomes research standpoint, our group includes clinical researchers, epidemiologists, neuropsychologists, and others who are ready to consult on this process, what to measure, how to measure it, to evaluate student outcomes that matter to the district and to our community. We can help you do that. Financial and organizational metrics, of course, also should be monitored. And most importantly, these results need to be shared, concerns and opportunities should be responded to, and refinements to the plan made so that we can make things even better. When kids are leaving home at 6 o'clock in the morning, traveling in the dark, and their health and academics suffer, we can't wait. It's time to be student-centered on every centered, every student, not just those that are at a healthy start school, which is a minority of our high schoolers. Our group is ready and eager to expand our collaboration with the district and reach a win for every school in CPS. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vargas Adams. Do board members have questions or comments? Ms. Bates?
Well, I do, because in a lot of my concern, I have many concerns, but one really is with regard to the process. Because I believe that, as well-meaning as you are, you're so far ahead of the board that, you know, without a recommendation from the superintendent or a vote of the board, all of a sudden, we have a group working with our transportation department. And, you know, that is, that certainly is not within our process, and I believe undermines the authority of the board. So, no matter who would have done it, your group or any group, I have a real problem with that. It's a, you know, lack of transparency and a lack of sunshine, and we're just kind of finding out about it in bits and pieces. So that's a big concern I have, is the process and how it's come about. And it's like, yay, here it is. And when does the board, you know, have a discussion? It went from committee to working with the Director of Transportation, and the super, it seems like the superintendent and the board was, they, we were left out, the full board. And that's a problem for me. I would, you know, we have talked about how this is going to be cost-neutral. So, we're going from a $50 million estimate at one end to cost-neutral at the other end without a detailed financial analysis. So, again, I can't support this until our treasurer is involved and is able to give us a financial analysis. It seems to me that, you know, the board is, the full board has been left out of this process, and we're getting information bombarded at us without really having an opportunity to get the recommendations from the people that report to us. And that's what I would need before I would be able to progress with this.
Yes. And if I could follow that, because my comments has, also has to do with process. And I agree, the first thing that happened that was a little different was, there was a letter directed specifically to me with a list of requests for information and data, and it's a little bit outside of the process. Now, I agree, as a courtesy, because I respect the work, and I think every board member here respects the work that this group has done. But the process, I think, as I understand it, is that your work, it has been in the Student Achievement Committee for quite a while. So the way the board operates, we are guided by the recommendations that come out of student achievement. And so tonight, I'm going to ask you to now go back and to redirect you to student achievement, where if there are any board, if there are any assignments or data requests or whatever, that gets processed there. There's another issue for me that I think, I think we've said, we've said many times, we don't disagree with the research or the data or the need. We have always said that this is a huge endeavor that factors significantly into our overhaul of the transportation process. And so, we really need, the board really needs to be focused on what information is coming out of that. And what I heard at the last meeting was a huge step in this healthy start initiation without it being sort of, lack of a better word, sort of overbearing on this because it's not the only factor in how we transform transportation. The other thing that I want to comment, and then other board members if they have comments, I am concerned, and I am concerned that this initiative, as good as it is, we haven't heard from the cross-section of district families and parents who this is going to impact. We've heard from a very small carve-out of families. And so, one of our concerns as a board needs to be, you know, how we engage other members of the community, especially our cultural communities, where a lot of the information that's being presented about, you know, childcare issues and environmental issues are huge for some of those people, where we're trying to make a decision about how to impact their lives. So while, and I want to say, I appreciate the work that the group has done. I believe that you do, you are in conversation with Lauren Johnson in terms of transportation. I would urge the group to stay connected to the, in the regular process of the Student Achievement Committee, and help student, and student achievement can help you direct it in a way that it feels like we're not duplicating ourselves. So, you know, and it's nothing about the information. Again, I want to make sure to reiterate that. It's not that we don't believe that it's valuable and it may be needed, but if you, if I had to vote on this today or even next month, I probably wouldn't vote on it because it's too huge for us to make such a definitive decision without us hearing from the broader scope and following our scope and following our process. So that's, that's sort of my comment about it. Mr. Morosky?
Thank you, President Jones. Thank you, Dr. Adams, for presenting. And with all due respect to my colleagues, the process is important, and this is the reason why Student Achievement gave all of you a 47-sum-page document at the Transportation Matrix, and then the activists were asked to then join the Transportation Matrix after that meeting to get to this point. So with, with all due respect, and I'm all about process, too, this is why we created that document that was given to everybody in August or September. And so I, there is no vote happening tonight, obviously, and the administration needs to come with a recommendation, and Lauren Johnson needs to be, all that's said, so I agree with everything after that. I just want to be clear for the record that Student Achievement has been very open about all of this and gave a massive pack that had responses from multiple schools, not just a carve-out, to use your words, of some subset of the district. It was from the whole district. You were provided that, all of us were. And we took time, and Phyllis Davis took time, to present it and prepare it. So I just want to be very clear that the Board of Education has these items, and that this, while new, is supplemental to what was already prepared. We even came up with recommendations out of Student Achievement, 17 of them in blue, offsets, so it was easy to read. So I agree in the process, Mr. Johnson, Ms. Wagner, Ms. Mitchell, need to be recommending what we move forward with. But when you have a group that's willing to work with Mr. Johnson and come up with ways to say, look, Metro is right, we can't do A, B, and C, but D is possible, and if we know, because I've heard President Jones, you, and Board Member Bates, and actually everybody up here say repeatedly, we don't disagree with the science, we know this is good for kids. Well, if that's the case, then we need to be serious about moving forward with something that has come out of Student Achievement time and time and time again. So, and I just want to end with repeating that this group was directed, after the Transportation Matrix, to do precisely what you just suggested they do, and they've been doing it.
Okay, well, my, my comment around that, Mr. Morosky, and I appreciate your feedback on that. I personally feel inundated with so much information that I don't even know what direction we're going. I'm saying, Student Achievement, we do our work through committees. Okay, and I agree with you. We have tons of information. Now, we have an initiative because we asked for, for Transportation to come up with this transformational plan. What I'm saying is Healthy Start Times is a part of that, and there is movement in that. And all we're asking, let's tighten the process so we can make an informed decision as a full board. That's, that's just the point of it.
And thank you, President Jones. And I totally agree, and I just wanted to be clear that Student Achievement has done their best to provide information to keep the full board in the know on all of this. This isn't some secretive thing, as was seen to be alluded to. I just want that to be clear.
Well, whether things were secretive or not, I don't know. But all I'm saying is, the work, the work needs to happen in Student Achievement, and all, okay, and what I'm saying is, it lies there now, even, even with this presentation. It lies in Student Achievement. Student Achievement can work with Lauren Johnson and administration on how it gets presented to the, to the board, to the full board, so that we can make informed decisions. That's all I'm saying. Ms. Bolton, and then Ms. Bates?
Ms. Bates, you want to go ahead first?
No, I just wanted to say, perception is reality. And, you know, we, when we gave, I guess, I wouldn't call it a directive, but when I heard at the last meeting that there was movement to make changes already at two schools before the board had the opportunity to discuss it, before we receive a recommendation from the superintendent or receive a financial analysis, one has to wonder, who made these decisions? So yes, that is my perception, and I do challenge that. So as, I'm not a member of the committee, I, you know, I can say, I've given you all the, you know, financial spreadsheets from Finance Committee. Didn't you read those, Mike Morosky?
Yes.
You know, and did you get the full explanation as we did? You know, it's, that's why we have committees, too. So that's, that's my perception, and I was a bit surprised, or very surprised, when I found out at the last meeting that things were moving the way they were.
Ms. Bolton?
Great, thank you very much, and thank you for your work and your report tonight, especially, no pun intended, but I'm, I'm late to this cause. As a person that spent 36 years teaching high school, all but two of those years, I had year-long extracurricular activities to be in charge of. And I will tell you that only because I tried to remain objective about this, especially after Member Hoffman left the Student Achievement Committee, did, and it was hard for me to do so, because I had sort of the approach, well, it might disrupt extracurriculars. To me, that's critical. And then, not only might it disrupt that, I think there's a correlation with extracurricular and achievement and success. So that was, I was pretty predisposed to think that. Having spent my life with teenagers, I also made the determination instinctively that, well, they're not going to sleep anymore anyway. And knowing what I know of parent, in modern parenting, it's pretty darn hard to get them to sleep. But because I've been on the board a really long time now, I have been retrained to look at the data instead of follow my instincts. If you teach long enough, you do things by instinct, not data. And Johnny, come lately to this, I am completely supportive of a healthier start for teenagers. There has to be some reason why our attendance and our tardiness is chronic and a failing. There has to be some reason why all this work at our high schools, my alma mater included, is still getting an F. We could at least get a D off of that terrible state report card. We have to do big things to help our children and our families. I worry about families not being able to have the childcare that they need. If we worry about that, then by God, let's have absolutely free, open after-school care at all of our Title I schools, if we care about that. So my point on this is, I'm supportive of it because the data is there, much as I don't, I didn't want to agree with it for a year. But I'm also supportive of it because frankly, I think we have done the process, at least from a standpoint that Student Achievement, through an initiative by one board member, Ms. Hoffman, and through a parent and community advocacy group, decided to make this a cause. And they've attended every darn meeting that we've asked them to. They've advanced their cause as best, I think, as they could. And more particularly, the exciting thing about it is that we actually may now have a transportation department that can embrace this kind of data, can embrace this kind of opportunity, and can move our district and our children in a fairer way. The irony is that the people that are most involved with this are the people that are saying our kids can come a year or two later. For me, the answer here is an assignment back to Student Achievement. I'm with that. Don't worry, we'll, the three of us will knock something out. But also for these folks to continue to work to a certain extent with the Transportation Matrix Group, and also by the openness of, of the Director of Transportation. And when he presented that maybe you could do two schools when we were at West High, that was the evolution of a year's work. And part of the evolution was getting a new transportation department. And we're in a great shape to embrace this. My druthers would be, send it to Student Achievement. We will put this on the agenda again this month. But more particularly, I really would like to, and when we get to assignment, I would like to assign the treasurer to have an opportunity to look at the financials, and I would like our Director of Transportation to look at whether the four schools, including my alma mater, not only Be Dater and West High, but also the Withrow and Aiken, so the four. I'd like them to look at that possibility. But we'll say that when we get to assignment. But I do, frankly, the engagement, the engagement people have been doing engagement out the wazoo this year on this, but more particularly, having advocacy groups is also part of engagement.
Thank you, Ms. Bolton. Mr. Davis, followed by Mr. Messer?
Thank you, and thank you, Dr. Vargas-Adams, very thorough. I have a question about, have we spoken with each of these harmful early start time schools and their administration around whether or not this is something that the administration at the schools would, would be interested in?
We have not been able to have a direct conversation with the principals of those schools, although we have requested.
I guess that would be something that the administration would, would, would...
I'm unaware of the request.
Okay.
You would suggest?
Yeah, I would definitely suggest that. I think that would be helpful. Mr. Morosky left, but I want to be clear that I have not been the one to say that all of the research is, whatever he said, everybody up here said. I didn't say it. I've been very cautious about supporting or not supporting this initiative. But I must admit, the effort of your group, and whether or not there were process changes, were all on us, including tonight's presentation, which was accepted by us. When I heard that this group was having weekly meetings with the department, that was brand-new to me. But quite frankly, I wasn't, I wasn't offended by it. I was kind of thinking, maybe we should do some other groups like that, and maybe we should open up some other departments to have some other meetings with some folk that want to spend their own time and their own money, and their, their efforts that have been, to me, and I'd have to hear from Mr. Johnson, but seems to be very helpful. And I know that it may be outside the scope for, and quote-unquote, advocacy group, I mean, or activist group. I like to call you guys an activist group.
We'll accept that.
Yeah. To do all this work, I mean, if the administration would then say, on top of this, that it's something that they would be willing to move forward, I don't see much, much more that we have to do if, if these schools, I'm really concerned about the schools and the administration's willingness to accept whatever the recommendation might be. I don't think we should just force our schools to do anything without, without the work. And I, I will say this, I mean, without their involvement, and I will say this about the process, there has been no secrets. Like Student Achievement has been super clear, they've been doing the work with transportation for a long time. No, I didn't know they were having weekly meetings with the Transportation Department until Mr. Johnson told us they were, but quite frankly, it doesn't seem to be that bad a thing. So, you know, I'm, I was uncertain how the presentation got on today's agenda without first having the presentation at Student Achievement, which I thought was a little backwards. But since we're here, I think to Board Member Bolton's point about sending this back to Student Achievement and then having us do whatever we need to do there and bring it back here, I think that would be appropriate.
Yeah, I just want to, I just want to follow up, without sounding defensive. I took, I take full responsibility for, for agreeing to allow Dr. Vargas-Adams to be here. And it was based on some perceptions about the process not working the way it was supposed to be. And I wanted to be respectful enough to be able to allow them to do their work, because, to be honest with you, and, and I won't go there, I was hearing all kinds of things about where the information was, and meetings that were occurred that were outside of the scope of Student Achievement, and all of this. So I was trying to be respectful to the group. And I, so it, we do own this. It's the board's responsibility to take care and address this. And it goes, and I agree with Ms. Bolton, that we have to go back to the process, let's get the process down so we know what direction we're going, and then we'll, and work with administration so we can have the recommendations we need to react to. So, Mr. Messer?
Yeah, I would just can also comment, just where my head is. Philosophically, I think it makes great sense. The data was compelling. And I think how I interpreted then kind of how this would flow is, you know, the committee did the work, we got a presentation, and then I think some of us gave some key questions that we had. Mine was the question with Metro, have they, have we met with them? Are they on board? Do they fully understand? And, and that cost piece tied to that, and probably even more importantly than, you know, the, the families, the administration, everybody at wherever places we would do it, just that everybody is kind of engaged in this plan. So I think those, those key questions, I still have kind of in my head. What is the true cost? Not just dollars, but also, are there things with the family administration? Then I would see, then we would have a kind of information session on those key questions. And then, once those, you know, it kind of got to that, then we would then get kind of a final comprehensive proposal, perhaps by the superintendent, because this doesn't just touch transportation, it touches so many other pieces of the district. So I feel like, you know, while it's great, and having been an activist in your shoes and, and going to city council, I would never have gone to city council and then kind of been the one kind of presenting information for them to then make decision on. It would have been presenting information, and then ultimately, it would come back to the council for, for a review. So I think, you know, if we capture what our key questions are, and I think frankly, a lot of the data is there, but to kind of Member Bates' point, there is a lot to kind of dig and ascertain, the demographics of this school, does it look like we have feedback from families that look like that? That while we know the science is good for them, realistically, can they make that work? And then, secondly, do we have everybody surrounding that building and everything that that impacts, supporting it? And then, of course, as this bakes into the broader picture, all the other partners, not the least of which is Metro, and having them be a part to say, we're all in to help make this work, and this is kind of the short-term rollout, and this is what it could look like over time with these certain metrics.
Thank you. Dr. Vargas-Adams, first of all, we do appreciate all the work that your group has done. That, that is by far, I mean, we want to acknowledge that. I think what we're experiencing tonight is there were some flaws in how we operated around this, so it has nothing to do with your presentation tonight. The information was helpful, and I'm sure board members read it and will continue to read it. What we need to do is to restructure ourselves around this initiative. And so that's why I was suggesting that, or I asked you to redirect back to Student Achievement. Student Achievement, we're going to make an assignment back to Student Achievement so that they can put a framework around it, and then we can follow the process as it's supposed to be. So we appreciate you, your presentation tonight, and we look forward, I'm sure the Student Achievement Committee looks forward to continuing to work with you around that. Hopefully, we can come to a decision based on the information that we have soon about how we move forward with this. It is important, and we have to make a decision. We can't keep it drawn out for another year or two. So we do appreciate it.
Thank you. I appreciate your consideration.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so let's move on to, we have a board matters issue that won't take a lot of time. Going back, Mr. Board Member Messer gave an update on the STEP committee process, and... And one of the things that came out of that meeting was a request for the board to nominate a couple of people to represent board interest on the design team. And so for those of you, and maybe Superintendent, if I could ask you, if you could just briefly explain what the design team will do?
Sure. So as you're aware, we've been collecting information, quite honestly, all year long from different groups as it relates to a vision and a mission for CPS, whether it's the District Y L S D M C meetings, or it's the STEP, the Strategic Planning and Engagement Group, or the community group around Mercy. So we are taking all of that information in as the design for the strategic plan is being crafted. In our work, as you know, we are working with Engage to Learn around actually putting this plan together. And we're using the SWOT analysis from the STEP committee to help guide our work. We also, though, have a design team, people who are actually doing the work to mine all the information and to put it together into a mission that aligns to the board's strategic priorities, along with identification of some strategies aligned to your priorities and then metrics to be able to score them. And so there's a STEP committee who gives us, who serves as a consultant role in terms of giving us information. And then there's a design team who will actually help do the work with Engage to Learn. That design committee is made up of some business people, some business people from the community, along with representatives of our staff, including union representation. The Engage to Learn staff felt that the board may be interested in identifying two slots or seats on that design committee to actually sit with us and help us do the work. So that can look in different ways in terms of it could be nominating specific people, or it could be nominating specific roles, and then the administration would go out and find people who fit in those categories to serve on the team. Our next meeting is scheduled for next week, which is November the 19th, which is prior to the board presentation given by Engage to Learn.
Right.
March, I'm sorry, March.
March, yeah.
March 19th. My apologies.
Thank you. Yeah, so I'd, maybe we could open up the discussion to see if there is a preference for, or if people have suggestions about who might, who we might nominate for this design team, to bring on to the design team. Or if we, or we can talk about what are the things that we want to see that person bring that could respond directly to our concerns and ask the administration to develop or bring to us a couple of recommendations. One of the things I said earlier to Superintendent as well, I'm sure that each individual board member has a couple of people in mind, and it would be easier if we just talked about what are we looking for, what do we want from that, those two appointments? And then we'll move forward from there. So ideas, please. Mr. Messer, followed by Ms. Bates?
Yeah, I think, you know, probably an easy pool of candidates would be those people that have engaged year to date, or not year to date, project to date on this particular initiative. So maybe if we mapped out criteria most specifically about the timing required, that might be a filter for a lot of people and, and lay out the time requirements, because my guess is, given, you know, this is not a strategic plan, thank goodness, that's going to take two years to build, the window's pretty short, but it's also going to be intense. So it's going to require somebody, you know, who's, who's able to do that probably at hours that would be more consistent with the staff and the administration day to day work schedule.
Ms. Bates?
And I would recommend, and actually there's, it kind of alludes to that as I briefly looked at that, those suggestions or that, that template, that instead of at first nominating people, that we identify the constituency groups in our district, you know, so we can make sure that we include the NAACP and the business community, because I don't believe that all of those groups are represented in the current makeup of the STEP committee, but make sure at this point that they're included to get a good cross section.
I believe there have been, there are people from the business committee where we've reached out. So there is some representation, so, but I agree with you, there are other constituent groups we might want to consider. Ms. Bolton?
Yeah. First of all, I, I don't want any charter school representation. It's listed here. Parents, secondary, elementary, and charter or private school. I'm really not interested in any charter representatives being on our strategic planning committee. But I think a constituency group would be good. I added something, and I'm glad you put it where you put it, on the board matters, Madam President. From the, the meeting that we had last Tuesday, I think, I feel very, very strongly that, yeah, we can do a constituency group here, but I would hope and would suggest to the superintendent that the STEP committee meet more than one more time, because that's all the time that they have been given for the rest of the duration is because in a few minutes, they said, so what? When they saw that call to action, it wasn't as big as they wanted it to be. So I, I think what Mrs. Bates is suggesting, a constituency group, figuring out that it's representative of those people that have actually been helpful and big thinkers about this district, not just complacent or compliant folks, but people that have a different perspective, and that the superintendent look at the schedule for the strategic planning and try to work in at least one or two more opportunities for the STEP committee to at least have an opportunity to review it. Because I, I was, I, I think Mr. Messer, who was elected chair, I think did a great job of getting it started. You did a fantastic job of catching them all up. And then when we went through all of the things that they were seeing, their first, I mean, that one quote from the one person who had been a board member in a suburban district and said, I saw this action, call action 20 years ago. We must use them a bit more. So, you know, one or two more times for them to review. But I think a constituency group, I'm comfortable with what the superintendent would even suggest as to, because she knows better who really is, you know, what groups have, have been there for so much of the heavy strategic stuff that she's been doing before.
Mr. Messer?
Yeah, just, I, I think one constituency group that I'd love to see in there is that city under perhaps, and, and maybe it's not just city of Cincinnati, but some of the other jurisdictions in which we support, but definitely maybe somebody from Cincinnati and maybe somebody from one of those others. Because, you know, as we've seen over the past year, so much of what we do facts and crosses over so many things that our, our city and our local governments do as well. So I do think that that would be one very specifically that I'd love to figure out a way to stitch them in a little closer. And maybe even provide all of our city leaders an update that we're going through this and that we are being very deliberate about including somebody that's from their group that looks like them, et cetera. So, so that it is, you know, this all in one group.
Thank you. So I think what I hear the group saying is we, we are entrusting you with giving us some recommendations for that, and we'll act on that, so.
If I could just address two quick moments. The reference to charter and non-public was actually put on this nomination form to address the board's interest in growth. And so the idea was to collect information for people who live in the city of Cincinnati, who, but do, who do not send their children to CPS, to understand what could we do in our plan to recruit those families to Cincinnati Public Schools.
That would be great.
And so that's the reason that was in there.
That would be great.
Okay. And the second thing is, I think that it would be beneficial to pull the STEP committee together, not in its totality, but according to the five different committees, to work specifically on those strands that are related to the priorities of the board, and then bring them back together as a large group in April, and then again in May.
I think that would be great, if you can take care of that. That would be good, to keep that group with us and focused. That'd be great.
But it will be small committee work.
Uh huh. Go for it.
In the meantime, we look forward to your response and recommendations tomorrow.
So you are okay with charter school families and non-public giving us input as to what they would want to see that might draw them back to CPS?
Yes, if that's the, the question. It's not, you're not representing charter as institutions, but they are parochial and private and, and charter families, what would make you return home to CPS?
That's an excellent strategy, I think. Yeah.
I'm in favor of that.
Definitely parochial, too.
Definitely parochial.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else about the STEP piece? Okay. Superintendent Mitchell, do you have a report?
I do. I have a very short report. You know, I always like to highlight our young people. And so I think someone has a clicker for me. So just wanted to bring a close to the celebrations that took place in the month of February. Haze did an outstanding job with a surprise recognition of their unsung heroes, continuing to celebrate African or Black History Month, as well as Rockdale. Rockdale had a very nice program, which included singing and dancing and skits, as well as African drumming and a tribal dance. They also did acknowledge and honor iconic African American leaders in a very special way. SCPA, my school, all of these schools are my school. But this is very dear to my heart, and I don't have a swoop to say, but SCPA is the recipient of the 2019 Over the Rhine Chamber of Commerce OTR Made Award, which recognizes individuals and businesses for promoting arts, culture, and food, and entrepreneurship in a historic neighborhood. So SCPA will receive the Norma Peterson Arts and Culture Award, along with 11 other businesses and individuals in the OTR area. So that is phenomenal. They were presented with an award on March the 6th at Memorial Hall. And then last but not least, you can see our elementary students at Ro Hill. On Ro Hill, some local music therapy nonprofit teamed up together to help students, parents, and staff members unwind while learning together music. So that is my report for this week.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the revised recommendations of the superintendent?
Some moves.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Davis?
I've just got one question. The Office of Talent Development, are there going to be additional hires in that department? I know we hired a director. Are we going to hire additional people in that department?
We have been slowly building this department over time. This position actually has taken us a year to fill this position.
I remember you talking about that before.
It should have been in place a while ago, but we've really taken our time to get the right candidates. I, I think the board, Mr. Board Member Messer would appreciate that a couple of us had the opportunity to go to Crotonville, which is GE's state of the art world training facility to really get a bird's eye view as to what leadership development looks like, as well as the employee experience. And so this, I am convinced, I am totally convinced, that this is the most important work that we can do in the district. As Board Member Bolton says quite often, we can't remediate ourselves out of what we're trying to accomplish, and the employee experience is critical and the most important thing. Our employees, in terms of our teachers and principals and paraprofessionals and just everyone, are on the front lines. And so we need to really do a better job at providing an experience in which makes us a place where they want to work. We have a long way to go, and so we will continue building out this department, because again, our employees are our most valuable assets that we have within our district.
I encourage you to continue on that route. I, I think it's, I think it's critically important, and I appreciate your perspective in that regard.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Ms. Wagner, please call and roll. Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Ms. Wagner, I'm going to have to abstain on recommendation one, Roman numeral, that's not a Roman numeral, letter E. Recommendation one, letter E, and I vote yes on everything else.
Thank you. Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morowski?
Yes.
President Jones?
Aye. Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the report of the treasurer?
Some move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Davis?
I just had a question on these change orders. Are we expecting a lot of these change orders? It's like, it's like three or four of them. I'm on, I'm on page four. There are two change orders under, they can apply. Then there's a, another one under.
So this change order is related to facilities?
I believe so.
Yeah, I'm sorry, no, I was, yeah, I apologize.
One is HVAC and one was something else.
So, Mr. Adams, are you able to come to the mic to be able to address these change orders?
I know they happen every once in a while. I just want to know, should we be expecting a bunch of them, or?
I don't really have the specifics of this specific change yet. I mean, I think it's normal adjustments that make at the last minute. So I think our food service is going to be able to provide some of the equipment in the kitchen. So I don't know exactly what he's doing with the HVAC at the, at the Clifton, but I can find that out and get that to you very first thing in the morning.
Okay. I appreciate, Mr. Adams.
Mr. Davis, it really is not our preference to do change orders. We really want to make sure, and we've, we have been working diligently to tighten up some of our processes, to make sure that we can submit things on time and is board approval before any action is taken. There are some instances in which changes are made midstream the process. We apologize for that, and again, we are working on our processes so that we don't ever get ahead of the board on these matters.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Ms. Wagner, please call and roll. Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morowski?
Yes.
President Jones?
Aye. Thank you. Okay, we're at the item for inquiries and updates, and I'll go ahead and start that. I have three, two, pretty short ones. And this is to our participants in our audience. As many of you know, we announced last week, and it was in our, in a news release about the resignation of our board colleague Erica Copeland Dansby, who made the decision to resign based on her expanded role with CYC. So the board is in the process right now of filling that vacancy. So I just wanted to take a moment to give you this bit of information. We will start our application process readily because we, we do have time constraints. The Board of Education will officially open the process to fill its vacant school board member position on Tuesday, March 12th, 2019. Interested applicants must submit an application, including three references, cover letter, and resume to Phyllis Davis, who is in our board office. She's our admin at davisph@cps-k12.org. Applications must be received by the board office no later than 5:00 PM on Tuesday, March 19th, 2019. The board intends to interview applicants from 11:00 AM to 6:00 PM on Wednesday, March 27th, 2019. Once appointed, the successful appointee shall serve through December 31st, 2019. The appointee has the opportunity to run for election for the remaining two years of Mrs. Copeland Dansby's term by filing for the November 5th, 2019 election. So this information will be provided in the news release and on our website. And if you have any questions about it, please feel free to call our office or Lauren Worley, our communications person. Thank you so much. Okay. Ms. Worley? Okay, Ms. Worley? Who is going to give us just a brief update on the budget public engagement session?
Good evening, Board members. Just a real brief overview, and I want to get your input tonight on the budget hearings that you've asked us to put together. So as you are aware, we have currently scheduled two budget hearings. The first coming up soon, on March 19th, to be held at Woodward High School. And the second on April 17th, to be here, held here at the Education Center. The two main goals we have for the engagement sessions are first, to engage the community on a discussion on the investments in strategic priority areas in the budget. And the second is to obtain helpful feedback on the Board's strategic plan. Because it's a great opportunity for us to hear from the community that way. The top part of the presentation will include, of course, the call to order and pledge. And at Woodward, a presentation from our students, who are the most important part of what we, why we do what we do. It will include a presentation from the Superintendent and Treasurer, focused primarily on the investments in equity. We're recommending the opportunity to do some small group presentation on some key topics. In particular, our investments in college learning and career-focused learning. But we're certainly open to any discussion that the Board has on, on what those presentations could look like. Again, the overall goal is just to, is to increase engagement and answer questions as opposed to potentially having folks come to the microphone and, and make assertions or guesses about what they think could be in the budget and have, give you the opportunity to actually engage with them. So certainly open to any thoughts and suggestions on how to do that.
Thank you. Any additions, Ms. Bolton?
I don't have an addition, but in that planning, we do have a tendency to present every chance we get. And hopefully, you build into that period of time opportunities for people to share what they have ideas about so that there is some input. It just, it's, we, engagement, it's, as long as you can work it out that it's two-way, but somewhere in there, public, when they come to a budget hearing for the city, even if the city's not paying attention to what they're saying, they at least have an opportunity to say what it is that they care about. And we have to start doing more of that in these opportunities, especially now that we can get some good ideas.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other comments then? So I'm looking forward to it.
Me, too.
So thank you so much for informing us.
No problem.
And hopefully, we'll, it'll be well-attended, which is what we want.
And we can use your help making sure we get the word out. So we'll resend you the invitation as well. And please send to your networks. We appreciate it.
Yes. Mr. Davis?
I'm sorry, remember Bolton, because that's confused me. So the public doesn't get to speak at these things?
That's actually what we're trying to make sure does happen. Because normally, when you say the word hearing, you start, you either, one of two things. One is that we're just having a presentation and people are listening, or that's more of a, a more formalized hearing of the public where people get two minutes to say something, but there's no engagement, you know, no response to the, to the questions and that type of thing. So the format that we're, that we're planning to present to you and to have is, allows people to not only speak and say what they have thoughts on, but also allow the Board to engage in dialogue with them or administration to answer questions of someone, you know, how much money do you spend on bus transportation? We'd like to be able to answer that question as opposed to someone going through the whole hour and a half event and not getting an answer to the question they may have.
Got you. Thank you very much.
Okay. Mr. Ms., Ms. Bolton, did you have your hand up?
To emphasize, but the public will have an opportunity to speak.
Absolutely.
Not just listen. And they have a, have an opportunity to ask questions. And we have great answers. But they don't, they can't come there and hear us present and present. So the engagement's two-way because they shared and we're sharing.
Thank you. Other comments? Thank you. Okay. So my final update is on tomorrow, I will be representing the Board at a taping that WLWT is doing called Where We Stand. It's a panel discussion highlighting four areas, employment, crime justice, education, and poverty and health. Members of the panel will be the mayor, city manager, police chief, health commissioner, free store CEO, city link president, and me. So I promise to do, to represent this Board well. It will be taped tomorrow morning, and it will be aired March 14th at 7:00 PM, following NBC Nightly News. Okay. Other inquiries and updates? Yes, Mr. Morosky?
Just an update for the Board's edification. You may recall at the organizational meeting, you all honored me with an appointment to the Council of Great City Schools. So I get to sit at the big kid table when I go this year. We got our agenda and our packet just this morning. So I have not printed it all out and gone through it with a fine-tooth comb. But the Board meeting will be on Sunday at the Mayflower Hotel in Washington, DC. And I'll be meeting with the representatives from the state of Ohio and southwestern Ohio. So ideally, representatives from Rep. Shabbat and Rep. Wenstrup's office, too, when they get back. So it'll be great. I just wanted to update you all. And again, I will rep you well. Thanks again for the appointment.
Ms. Bolton?
Be sure when you see folks from Shabbat's office to emphasize the J R O T C, since he's semi-interested in that. And then I, I don't know if this is an inquiry or an update, but based upon our presentation on Wednesday at West High regarding preschool, I, I just want to make sure that what was, what was told to us, and I have the presentation, I don't know if this is an assignment, but I need clarification on what they were really talking about. Because I felt that a lot of it was, was childcare. And a lot of it was early. And that happened in that C U C I report, too, where they started using the word early childhood instead of preschool. Preschool is curricular. Preschool is kindergarten readiness. So I, I felt that they hedged even a little bit on the answers. And I know they're presenting this week, I think, to the preschool promise board. And we have to get that clarified because people might, and I might be wrong, but I, I think we need clarification on that.
An additional thing with that, just because it came out in that meeting was about clarifying the communication piece of that. And Mr. Messer is one of the representatives. So he and I had a brief conversation about perhaps, and Superintendent, we, we talked about it, but not planned around this. But maybe if the four of us, you and Vera, if we could get together to talk about that in a really broad way, and then we can give, come back to the Board to kind of figure things out around that. But yeah, but, but your concern that you expressed, we really do need some clarity on that[1668.68]